We're back. So, the meeting will begin with the approval of our consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve regular session minutes of June 14th, 2018. Public relations subcommittee meeting minutes of May 30th, 2018. Governance subcommittee meeting minutes of June 12th, 2018. Budget and finance subcommittee meeting minutes of June 15th, 2018. Safety subcommittee meeting minutes of June 21st, 2018. And acceptance of warrants 52 P-18 and 51 V-18.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The questions that you had were fixed?
Oh, yes.
Yes, perfect, okay, good. No student rep here this evening. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda this evening? So, we have Mr. Joe Patella here to talk about Camp Kiev. Come on up. I always like seeing that. It's an exciting time for the kids.
Love Camp Kiev.
Yep, thank you for getting it to us.
Usually we do it in October, but we figured if we could get it early, then we could let the parents know sooner.
Right. So, you'll be letting the parents know like right away? Or are you gonna wait until, like, what are you gonna?
Well, we already had one preliminary parent meeting. And we had, actually, we had an excellent turnout.
Good.
For that. And then we'll have our usual meeting at the end of September where for the rest of the parents who didn't or weren't able to make it. So, we'll have another meeting for that. And then we'll be on our way.
That's good. That's always a meeting that brings people.
Yeah.
You know, because it's such an exciting event for the kids. So, eighty-five kids, you're thinking are gonna be going?
Uh, we're hoping, well, we're hoping.
Is that the, is that the total number of kids?
No.
Or that's the ten?
That's the, that's the projected amount.
And you usually do what, like a five percent of the class?
Uh, anywhere between five and ten percent. So, I think the current incoming fifth grades, a little bit higher.
Yep. Okay. Anyone have any questions about it?
Do you know how many kids are in the current, the upcoming fifth grade?
I wanna say ninety-five?
This is the new.
So, one of the smaller classes.
It is one of the small classes, yes.
Right, we're moving from five teachers to four next year.
Okay, and that's great that the PTA donated a thousand dollars. It's always a very generous thing because it, again, it helps. I love that it, it gives back to pretty much every family, which is what the PTA wants to do. They wanna reach out to as many of the population as they can. So, that's a perfect way to do it. So, that's nice. Okay. Anybody have any, any questions about the trip from Mr. Patella?
I was just wondering if you had heard from the folks at Kiev. Have they, is there any difference between this year's program and last year's? Or is it pretty much the same or?
Well, they try to, they try to model the program around issues that we bring forward. A lot of the classes are repeats and are the same. But if they, if we have a specific issue, whether it be bullying or something else that they, relationship-wise, that they want us to focus on, we get ahead of, you know, we get to them the information. The program isn't, or doesn't have to be designed for a full week or two before we show up.
Right.
So, by that time, we usually have a good feel for the class and what their needs are, specific needs or specific needs of the district are that we could address up at Kiev.
So, we made an adjustment a couple of years ago to, to add a couple of activities that were more STEM-related.
We did. Yep, yep, we did do that.
And will that stay?
They continue to, to do those things, yep, yep.
And the teachers, I see here that we have, um, four teachers. Right. And then, so how many teachers do we have in that, five?
There'll be, there'll be four teachers next year.
There are four core teachers for sixth grade next year.
So then, so?
And one stays back, so.
Right, 'cause Ms. Havy is a special ed.
Correct.
So, one of the teachers is gonna be staying back to take care of?
Well, we, we always project one to stay back for the handful of kids that do not attend.
Yep.
So, there will, there will be one. Who that one is, right now, we really don't know.
Okay, so you're just putting their names in here now so we can?
Oh, so these, so these aren't necessarily the chaperones that are going?
The only ones that I know that are, that are absolutely going so thus far are Monica and Monica and myself.
Okay.
Miss McGinnis and myself.
Okay, okay.
But we will have the appropriate number of chaperones that will attend.
Yep, okay. Good. Okay.
This year, Christian, my son, is going with me. And it happens to fall on the week that my wife's birthday is, so this is an early birthday.
She can thank us later.
Him or I.
Oh, that's nice. That is gonna be a really good birthday. Just leave the present.
So, this falls on, what, we had the holiday question again, right?
Okay, so this falls on a, the day that PD for voting.
So, it's, it's one of the voting days.
Oh, okay.
So, it won't require any change in pay because the teachers would be?
Teachers would be there anyways.
There for PD.
But the sixth grade will get out a day early.
Day early.
Okay. It's just, we couldn't believe it. We're like, are you kidding me?
Again.
A second year in a row. Well, but that, it's just the week, it's the week, right? It's the week.
Do we know, like, how many kids came to the last day of school? Like, did kids still come to the last day of school?
Four kids.
Four out of that, out of the sixth grade?
Four out of the sixth grade.
Oh.
And the four that came did not go to the?
Kiev.
Kiev.
Oh, wow, what good kids that they did that. Like, they, oh. They came because they were required. Yeah, that's nice. A true officer came to their house.
Just one parentation, the children who didn't go to Kiev?
Yeah.
Were supposed to come the last day.
Correct, yeah. 'Cause they didn't, yeah.
To make up.
Right.
I think there were a couple other kids, though, who did go to Kiev that were there.
Yeah.
And I have one, one in particular.
The last day of school is always fun.
I know.
I always think.
It is.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the sixth grade trip to Camp Kiev from November 5th, 2018 through November 9th, 2018, as presented by Mr. Patella.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before Joe leaves, I just wanna make sure, I don't know if you all knew that Joe was one of the people who was recognized last night by CPAC for being a shining star.
Oh, that's nice.
As a special ed student, so, you know. Very much appreciated, Joe.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
That's really nice that they do that.
Well deserved, I'm sure.
You're in good company.
I am, I am, appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe.
Enjoy the summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe was also re-elected as the union president.
Did you have anyone fighting for you, fighting against you?
My face, no. Behind the scenes, as you well know, yeah, I'm sure there were.
Well, that's good. Congratulations, I think.
We'll be back again.
Oh, yeah, we'll be back.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Oh, good night. That's a tough job.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It really is.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I've been doing it a long time.
Yeah, so he's good at it.
Did he take over from Bill Pacilas? Did. Bill Pacilas was doing it for, Bill Pacilas did for like twenty-five years. Okay, last meeting discussed. Tom wasn't able, Tom Stewart was not able to come tonight, but we will be sure to get him on a future.
Yeah, why don't we talk a little bit about that event last night that some of you went to?
It's very, very nice. It was at Jeff and Maria's that were there, and they gave everybody a free ice cream, so people enjoyed that. And we had to get you the name, the complete set of names. We know the ones that came, but there were others, I think three others that could not come that, and I'll write a blog about it as well, but there were three that couldn't come.
Right, yeah.
I do remember Barbara Lattalian's name. 'Cause she's been a longtime supporter of special education legislation.
Yeah.
So, they wanted to recognize her, but her schedule didn't allow her to be there. Move a lot of great bills through there. But, you know, certainly Joe was one of those people. Henry Oshewski, Officer Oshewski was, was recognized, which was very nice. Special education teacher Megan Kelly. And there was a special ed assistant Molly Burr. And then the librarian from the Georgetown PBD library Kathy DeWitt were the ones that were there last night. But we will get you the list of the other three who were not able to attend. But it was, Tom Stewart had a little nice things to say about individual people. And a lot of it, he got from whoever nominated them. So, he read, you know, some comments that were very personal from some parents and?
And students.
And students. It was ver, it was very nice. It's very short, like he says, short and sweet, but it is a very nice gesture for them.
I think too, a nice gesture that he did this year, or the CPAC organization as a whole did, is they gave that scholarship to?
Every special ed student that was graduating.
Which I think is really nice that they did that.
I think he said, there were eighteen students, and he didn't hear from all of them. He heard from sixteen of them, I think. But, you know, they, they really are trying to reach out and, you know, acknowledge the hard work of the students.
Yeah.
Look at it. Yeah. And then it's the money from the trick-or-trunk. Yeah. Is where it comes from.
Oh, okay.
Which is, yeah. I forgot the date. We'll have to get you the date. Was it the thirteenth?
I wrote it down. It's like, it was like. So, that's a really successful event.
It's a Saturday. And I think they're still gonna do it in the afternoon, which seemed to be a more successful.
Yes, October thirteenth.
Yeah. Saturday, gonna write that down.
Oh, good.
Forward to that.
Yeah, I'd like to see Tom, maybe in the, in the fall, we can have him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He'd be happy to come.
Yeah. Yeah. He's got a lot going on.
We're working with him and the treasurer. We're working with him and the treasurer on the purchasing and all of that. Suzanne, her staff have been very helpful. Shan, but Chantel is not, she's stepping aside, and there's another lady that we met last night.
Oh, you're kidding. I didn't know that.
I said, we just changed you, and she said, no, she said it'll be, it'll be fine. But, you know, they, they've, we've kind of oriented them to what the procedure needs to be.
That's okay.
They've been working, so.
Nice that they can share the, you know, responsibilities. She's done it for two years, and now Jen is gonna take over.
Jen, yeah, yes, yeah.
All right. Good. Well, thank you guys for going. It was a good time.
Very, that's nice.
It was a really nice family night out.
Yeah, I'm.
Yeah.
It was very nice.
Good to see everyone.
Good. And Jeff and Maria's, it's nice of them too to host it and, yeah. And the families, you know, of the significant others that come, you know, so that's always nice to meet the families. And there were a lot of special education staff there that were there to support their colleagues. And that's always nice to see. Jack was there. Yeah, so.
Yep, yep.
So, it was very nice.
Nice. Okay, we have the acceptable use policy. Do I not have the? We do.
It should be in here.
It's not in here, though.
No.
What? It is not in here.
No. Last meeting we discussed it.
That was worth discussing, so I don't know how that didn't make it on, but it didn't.
Right, so the only thing that we discussed at the last meeting that we thought needed to be changed, like Michael had said, just the Google, we were gonna remove the sections that explained that. And that was the only?
And you know what? That's probably why it's not in here. Because I think we were, I think Liz was gonna take care of that, and I don't think we saw the final copy of it yet.
Okay.
So, I think it's on the agenda, but I don't think there's a copy because I don't think that was completed.
It hasn't happened yet.
So, we will definitely, we'll put it on for the next agenda, and we should have the completed document to look at it, okay? That's right, that's why.
Okay. The health and wellness curriculum.
Is Colin not, he's not here? Colin's on vacation.
Oh, he is, okay.
We did know that.
Well, I, I can just give you a quick update on that. We presented the curriculum, and Colin was there to talk about it to the Georgetown Cares Coalition Committee, who would be the funding source for this, this curriculum. And, you know, we were very impressed, and Colin likes the fact that every grade has a separate, as I think he mentioned here, you know, a separate curriculum, so there's no repetition. And so, each grade is especially age-appropriate in what they, they approach. We did discuss, so I think his total was thirteen thousand and something. But there is a, a little bit more elaborate or supplemental high school program, and I looked at the price. It's instead of Too Good for Drugs, it's Too Good for Drugs and Violence. And it kinda gets more into?
Oh, I saw that one, yeah.
Into bullying.
Line, yeah.
Um, and, and social, emotional, I mean, it's all based in social, emotional skills. But this looks like just something that would address more cultural issues at that age level. And planning and decision-making. It's two, he wanted four kits, and it's two hundred dollars more, so that's eight hundred dollars more. So, and we, we talked about that, and so the Georgetown Cares Committee voted to go up to fifteen thousand dollars pending the approval of the school committee, of course. So, that would be, I mean, I would personally recommend to add that in. And, you know, Selectman Dawes said he wants us to have like the best possible curriculum, one that other towns will envy, and, you know, will set the standard. And, and really, it, it does. Carol and I just went to the Positive Youth Development Workshop given by?
It was by the Tower Foundation, right? The state, well, the, it's the today, it was the state, 'cause it was the, it was, but the Search Institute. And then the folks from Newburyport that we've been working with, Tina and Andrea. Yeah, Today was the Search Institute. They talked about developmental relationships. Relationships, yeah, yeah. I, I felt like we're, we're doing all the right things.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
When I was listening to them, like, yep, we do that.
Yep, yep. It's just, it's a easy way to talk about it. It's kind of a language that helps people understand the, you know, what needs to go into a developmental relationship. Because a lot of teachers, we have very caring teachers, obviously, that, you know, know how to reach out to and connect to kids and ask them and, and, you know, help them with their challenges and everything. But children don't always perceive the caring as much as teachers feel it, you know? And so, it's just a little, it's a framework, I think, to help everybody, both students and, and teachers to get together. But my, the reason I went into that is 'cause they, they mentioned curriculums with the forty developmental assets in it. And I did some research to try to find, they don't, they don't exist yet. And I, actually, I spoke with a woman from the Search Institute, and she, you know, confirmed that, that really what we're doing. And I asked her about the one that we're, we're considering, and she said that, that does implement all of the, the principles and, you know, basic assets. It's not, it's made, it's done by the Hazelton people, but it works really, really well with the assets, and they are really not even close to coming up with such a curriculum, so. So, I, it just, I was, it just confirmed for me that this is like really the, the best one that we could.
At this point in time, right?
At this point in time, yes.
That's quite a generous donation. That's great, from Georgetown Cares, that's.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, you know, we wanna use, we, we're very lucky and blessed to, to have this, this money from healthy firms at this time. And the idea is to make the greatest possible impact on, you know, the community. And really, we, you know, the, the survey, it, it backs up, you know, we want everything to be data-based. And this survey really addresses a lot of the results, the results of the survey that we took.
Good.
So.
Okay, yeah, I was impressed with it. Okay, we'll make a motion to approve the Too Good for Drugs Health and Wellness Curriculum as presented by Director of Curriculum and Instruction Colin McDonald, as well as the information from Pam this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you to Georgetown Cares.
Oh, well, thank you for the school committee and for Colin for, you know, looking into the various different, 'cause he did research a number of different curriculums. And for, you know, deciding that this was the best one for us.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the PBIS and social, emotional curriculum over at Pembroke. Thanks for coming, Margaret. You're a party of one this evening.
A little lonely back there.
Extra points.
That's right. Thank you for coming out.
You're welcome. So, I, Will, and I apologize since you did not make it into your pack, so I'm gonna hand these out now. This is just a summary of, just an update on what we accomplished for PBIS. And then, may as well just do all the handing out now. This is a letter that I wrote to the North Shore Community Mediation Center to work in collaboration for the peer mediation. And then this is just a little description of what peer mediation is from their website. All right, so, as I've talked about for the past couple of years, this, this was our first year of PBIS implementation after spending some time deciding what PBIS was going to look like at the time of school. Because, again, PBIS is a framework, it's not a curriculum or a program.
It's more of the forty developmental assets, it's a framework.
It's a framework. Exactly. It doesn't tell you how to do it. And every school, every community has to decide for themselves what it will look like. So, this year, we did have professional development at the beginning of the year, working with teachers to lay out how we, bringing it all together, how we were going to structure the year. So, throughout the year, we implemented a behavior tracking system that we created and then teachers used. Because, again, remembering that the, the real point of PBIS is to provide support for children who do not have the social, emotional, and behavioral skills to succeed. So, that, that really is the, the whole premise of what we're trying to do. So, a piece of that is tracking the behavior and figuring out who the children are that are having difficulty, and then how we, what we do with that information. So, next year, we will continue to refine the behaviors that we're looking at and that get reported. Because, and as we see a little bit further down, one teacher's definition might be different than another's. And so, we have to just continue to refine what are the behaviors that we wanna track? What are the behaviors that a teacher deals with in the classroom? And we did have a flow chart, and I, actually, I'm gonna add that, to help teachers determine what kind of behaviors they should deal with in the room, and then what should come to the office. And then, we did implement our LEAF acknowledgement for individual students. And then, when the class, the grade, and then the school achieved a certain amount, there was an acknowledgement that did end at the end of the year with a barbecue that was a huge success. And I will say, really, it was just, I had such positive feedback from children and parents, but it really was due to all stakeholders really embracing that. I cannot say enough about the kitchen staff and how they were so enthusiastic about doing that. Mike Anderson and his crew just thoroughly embraced it right from day one. They brought in the grills, they brought in the popcorn machine, you know, the DJ. So, it really just, just everyone's efforts made it a success. And then, we did implement our SEPSAT, we call it, which is our social, emotional, behavioral student assistance team. So, that was ran on another day from our regular SAT. And this was where any child with, again, social, emotional, or behavioral issues were brought to the team by the classroom teacher. And then, from that, we created a watch list of students who we, the teacher might have had concerns about. And then, for other students, we did implement tier-two interventions. And you can see right below that nineteen students were brought to SEPSAT, which resulted in thirty-six meetings throughout the year. So, at the beginning, obviously, those first maybe two or three months, the teacher would bring the child to SEPSAT, and then there might have been another reconvene six to eight weeks later. So, that's, that's why there are more meetings than there are children. And then, from that, one student was referred for five oh four and found eligible, and then two referred for testing from SEPSAT, and one was found eligible, and the other was found not eligible. Our social, emotional lessons were incorporated during regular library time at the, the first library of the month, and, which was the kickoff of the theme for the month. And then, our SEL lessons were incorporated, again, in every class by Ms. Bazillion, Mr. Walsh, Ms., Mrs. Wall, Ms. Carol, and then Officer Oshewski. And Ms. Carol and Ms. Dorn worked with the upper grades to work in every classroom. We put out a, the cares, character traits were incorporated into morning announcements in our community gatherings. And then, we did publish a monthly PBIS newsletter, which focused on the cares, themes, and character traits. And that had a list of books, a list of activities in every grade level, and that I would put out, I would put out with, I'm just hesitating because I've gotta put out the June, but now I'm just gonna have to probably wait until next week.
You send that out through Connect?
So, thank you. I forgot, lost my train of thought.
AP throwing a fire.
So, I would send that out with my, this week, you know, with the newsletter. And then, the PBIS committee meant monthly to review data. I should put that in there. Recession behaviors were tracked by monitors. We collaborated with Georgetown Public Library to provide mentor texts that are related to the themes. And then, we created a resource center at our Pembroke Library to, again, link it to the themes for reference for teachers. So, any, any questions on, that was a lot, any questions on what we've done?
The, I guess my question, what, you collected a lot of data. What did, what did you get out of, or what did the data say? I don't mean what did you get out of the data, but like, what's, what's, what did you learn from it? Or like, what, what, what do we know now that we didn't know before we did this?
Nothing. And I was pretty clear with everyone, and we'll make it clear, this is baseline data. We, we don't really know what to compare it to because there are so many factors in the school year. When you start the school year, everybody comes in, has to relearn the rules and how to operate. And then, mid-year comes along, things run smoothly. But then, we have vacation. Then, we had some changes within staff that might affect how kids operate. Again, different expectations among teachers, so grade levels might look different. One grade level might have a lot of referrals, and another might not have a lot. So, we, this is our baseline, and then, next year, we can start to really start comparing. Comparing grade levels, comparing places of behavior, because we're collecting data in the aggregate. So, overall, how many behaviors at recess, or how many in the hall? And then, break it down by grade level, and then, next year, we can have an easier time tracking. All right, what did happen in September, what did happen in grade level in the aggregate, or?
And you can follow the same kids.
And we have those same students.
Right. It's not just third grade to third grade, but it's these cohorts of students.
Exactly, right, right. So, that's.
But there, and, and not to, not to push back, but there's, I certainly get the baseline data aspect of it, but there's also, gee, we're getting a lot of X, Y, Z behavior at recess. So, whether you know that, that ten incidents is a lot or a little?
Right.
It's still, I would think, would be a, hmm, maybe we should look at it. Sort of a flag.
Well, tho, those are always the, I mean, that, there are those places, there's no doubt about it. Recession, the bus, and the unstructured times, that, those are classic times. But it's hard to know in relation to the past, because even though we would collect data, we didn't collect it to such specificity. I mean, we are really, we are, children barely sneeze, and we know about it. So, we also have to be aware that it, when we look at the overall, behaviors are pretty good. Children are not, we're not having fistfights, we're not having, you know, there were a couple suspensions, but not a great deal. So, the overall behavior of students is they're, they're, they're accessing the general, you know, rules and expectations of the school. And again, it's, what we'll find is that it's a small minority who come up at time and time again. And that's where our focus needs to be. So, I would say, we are collecting that, recess is a problem, which is one of the reasons why I am so thankful and grateful for the teachers for agreeing that recess duty is, it's a priority for teachers to be out there. And I suspect that we'll see far fewer times that children have conflict at recess because there will be somebody there who knows the children and can intervene a lot quicker.
And I think the second step curriculum, if done with fidelity, will help with that too, because it's scenario based. And in, so there's a common vocabulary that gets built, a common set of strategies that students can call on, and the teachers can reinforce, which tie, will tie nicely into what the expectations are, I think, for behavior there.
I'm glad to hear the behavior is good, but for me to hear like suspensions at the elementary level is a little concerning.
It, it is, it is. But in-school suspensions, they're in-school. But when you're in sixth grade and you punch somebody, you know, that's.
But an in-school suspension has a lot more potential to be educational and to, you know, teach the skills that the students are missing than an out-of-school, so.
Well, is that, is that what's done, when it is an in-school suspension, like?
There, there's, they continue to do their work, but there, there is time to debrief of why
Yeah.
they're, why they're there. And then, there is always a reentry meeting with parents the next day, you know, before they head back.
Yeah.
But, but again, not many.
Yeah.
Did you have a question, Cheryl?
No, I think I'm good.
So, the next steps are to continue to refine, refine that data, the behavior tracking form. Because, again, some teachers have a different understanding of what a behavior is than another teacher, and it also is dependent on, on a grade level. Upper grades tend to have more, I would say, more tolerance for certain behaviors and deal with them within their classroom and within the, the grade level. And they don't tend to come to the office as much. But then, the flip side of that is, then, then we're not really aware if a child has a particular repetitive problem or issue. So, we wanna refine, that's great that you're able to manage that within the class because we know that it's better for the teacher who has that relationship with the child to deal with the issue. But we also wanna make sure that we're not missing anything and, and know who children are that maybe have some difficulty. So, we will continue to work on that.
Yes, so, just a question on that. Because I do think that, I personally think the teachers do need to be able to handle situations in their classroom, and it does seem like up at the middle high school level, it seems that children are referred to the assistant principal when they probably could have resolved it in class.
Right.
So, is that taking, is that taking things away from the classroom teacher, do you feel, or?
I, I don't think it's taking away, I think that, again, as we've talked about, some teachers really need to learn other skills, ways to handle the, the conflict within the classroom. And to, you know, it's really just embracing that here, here, in K to five. Now, in grade six, children are rotating, so they have, you know, five different teachers. But in K to five, here's your home, here's your home for six hours out of the day. And so, it really is important for, for children and teachers to have that relationship and that if there's a conflict, to be able to handle it. And not all the time, there are some behaviors that have to immediately go to the office, and, and that's just the way it is.
Oh, maybe I'm missing something then, because I agree with you that, and I think it's great that the teachers are able to resolve it. So, but it sounded to me more like, it's great that the teachers can resolve it, but we still need to know
We need to know, right.
So, does that mean that the teacher, he or she would just let you know, or that the child would be sent down?
No, that, that would be through the tracking form. And then, so that tracking form, all the teachers indicate on their tracking form, maybe a student, and then, again, we have it broken down actually by the CARES acronym. So, was it something the child had done, not cooperating, was it being disrespectful? Was it, you know, not being kind to appear, or, or whatever? So, then, we look, would look at that, and then, and then, it also helps the teacher. Because one thing we find, and especially for teachers, you're busy teaching, and you may, you may not even be aware how often you may have to talk to a particular child, or how often that child might have a conflict that you deal with. But when we're asking a teacher to indicate that, then you start thinking, wow, you know, I've had to remind this child three times this week, what else is going on? And do we need to intervene in some other way to help the child? So, even though the teacher still might be dealing with it, we really need to know because maybe there is something going on.
Are these forms paper?
They're paper, yeah.
But you might not do anything more with it, it's just, it's just a.
Again, we just wanna, yeah.
Right. It could just be like, I just, what I have in my mind, and it's probably just me. Exactly, is that that child is gonna be like a, you know, the child doesn't know it, which is great. But, yeah, that there would be some type of a, a mark on that kid.
That's what I'm saying, I don't think it's a consequence.
He could be no, you know, it was just him or her, the way that, you know what I mean?
Going through a very difficult time in his life too, a lot of that.
But I look at it, it's like the academic data, we, we collect academic data in the same way. Doesn't mean a child is not doing well, it just means if they're a dip in academics, we wanna know who they are so we can intervene. And that's exactly what PBIS is for, it's, it's, it's a, it is a part of that multi-tiered system. So, it doesn't mark them, it just, it lets us know, does a child need a particular help? Do they need help building skills they don't have, or, or is something going on? You know, again, there are children who might have an underlying disability that we need to know about so we can provide support for. So, it doesn't, right, it doesn't necessarily change anything for the child except for the support we can provide with that information.
So, are you collecting the data based on the CARES acronym? Like, for, so, remind me, it's cooperation, assertion, responsibility?
Empathy, self-control.
Okay, so, are you collecting data based on tho, like, certain behaviors?
Yes.
Well, that would fall into that.
Exactly, right, yeah.
And of course, I guess one thing too is developmentally in elementary school. Something that a kindergartner might do that
Right.
shows a lack of self-control, maybe more of a developmental.
Right, yes. But the teacher, right, but the teacher probably wouldn't indicate that. I mean, if you have a class of twenty, and you, like, you, you have, you know kids. So, it would be children on an extreme of that.
Right, but I, I think, so, when you were saying that you need to sort of refine the behaviors because some teachers have different levels of tolerance, or different understanding, like, I'm not sure, do you have an idea of how you're gonna do that?
You track by teacher?
We do, and I'll give you just a, that's a quick, a quick example. A sixth grader was, or was sent down to the office from a class, for swearing. So, you know, something happened in the hall, the locker hit him, he swore. I'm not, you know, that's probably not a behavior I would consider sent to the office. You know, it's not appropriate, I get it, you hurt your foot, but, you know, try to come up with another way.
It's a better choice.
Self-control.
To self-control, that, think of another word you can use when you're in public, as I'm sure we all do, you know, to indicate that. So, that would be an example where maybe another teacher wouldn't have sent them down. So, just kind of refining that of who, who would go to the office and who wouldn't, and what it would be for. And, 'cause that really could probably just have been a conversation with the teacher who heard it.
So, it's just having sort of like a set of rules for the teachers also to sort of follow?
Better understanding, right, yeah.
It's like the flow chart.
Exact, and which we have, but probably refining that just to.
Everything seems to be a flow chart, let me go to the flow chart.
The conversation continue about most effective classroom management?
Right, and that's part of the PD for next year.
Students and.
Right. Because it is about relationships, and, and we know, you know, again, and it's, it's hard to say, because I don't wanna imply that some teachers don't have good relationships, but just that some teachers are able to handle that through their relationship more than maybe some other teachers.
It just seems to me that more children get sent to the office. Whereas, maybe when I was growing up, if you got sent to the office, it was a pretty big deal. You know what I mean?
You feared.
Yeah, but now it just seems like, like it's not really, not that it's not a big deal, but it just seems to be a less.
Threshold.
Well, it's what, what are they sent to the office for? I'm sure it's a big deal if it's, you know, a major transgression, but.
Then it turns into a big deal because of the nature of what it is, but in this example.
Or it's not.
Or it's not, because as they say, we don't, we don't punish children. So, usually, when they come, it is more of a discussion and a, a discussion about the behavior rather than you're being punished when you go to the office.
Right.
And again, not that there aren't consequences, there are, but we don't want, I hope, and child will never fear to come to talk to me or Ms. Doran, so.
The consequences would depend on what the transgression, whatever it is, would be.
Mm-hmm, right.
Which may not be, or it might be.
Or it could, could be they miss recess, could be they write a letter to a peer. It could be for older child, maybe they do have to stay after school and have another discussion about what they had done. Sometimes it is meeting with a peer that they had the conflict with. So, there, there are lots of ways that we, you know, deal with those behaviors.
So, that sort of leads into the next steps.
I know this is used in quite a lot of districts.
It is.
Across the country.
Right, and, so I just wanna point out that this North Shore Community Mediation Center, if you Google it, they are a mediation center. They work with accords, they work with juveniles, they work.
All ages.
All ages, so this is just one piece of, of what they do. And so, in the winter, late winter, Amy Wall had been, because we had been talking about peer mediation as the next step for the older students. So, she did some research and then was hooked up with a young woman, Anya, from the North Shore Community Mediation Center. So, they were in the process of writing a grant for funding for next year and asked if we wanted to partner. So, the letter is in support of the, the process. And then, as a result, it is going to be about five thousand dollars, but we'll probably get a grant for about twenty-five hundred, and then, we will supply the other twenty-five hundred.
I think I told you in the yellow orange.
Green City Growers.
We had money allocated for them, but we've now sort of incorporated that through the school. They're sort of maintaining the, the gardens, Margaret's gonna have a full summer of wonderful vegetables that are growing. And so, we figured instead of earmarking for that, this would be something that, you know, we could, 'cause it's pretty much the same money, although it'll be less than the first year.
Right.
Because the grant will cover half of the cost.
And it might, every year, I mean, you might be able to get grant money every year. And then, the other piece of it, we may not require as much training in subsequent years. So, this year will require a lot, but then, once years go by, we might not need so much. Because the way it will work is, we will, we've identified two people. So, it'd be Ms. Doran and Ms. Bazillion, who are our coordinators. And then, we can select up to eighteen children to be trained. And so, at the end of the year, we did ask grade four and grade five teachers to nominate students, and we did send them some criteria to use. And, and then I got those names back. And then, the summer, we need to hammer out the days of the week, I mean, the, the number of trainings because the, this core children and the, the coordinators will need to be trained in September. So, there'll be about four mornings that they'll have to come in early. Anya or another coordinator will come in, train them. And then, we're planning on using four hours of PD day on October fifth. And then, five hours on the November day. And then, once the children have, and I think that will be twelve hours. So, once they have those twelve hours of training, some of them will be ready to start mediating. And then, they'll continue to be trained up in, up to twenty hours through, through the rest of the year. And so, we'll work with, and I'm just gonna call her Anya because I don't know who it will be. So, we'll work with Anya to identify what are the behaviors or incidences that will come to peer mediation? What will the process be, when will it be done? Sort of, kind of the nuts and the bolts of actually when it will happen. So, so next year, it will be fifth and sixth grade students who will, will be trained. And then, there's a parent night that can also be a part of that. So, Anya would come for an evening, talk with parents about what it's about. So, it's really kind of a full service. But then, as time goes by, we probably wouldn't need as much time through that, the center.
So, a question for you in terms of, who do they mediate? Like, what grade will it be?
Well, that's, that really can, again, be up for us to decide, but.
Like, if a kindergartner has an issue, they could?
It could, or, I look, you know, probably more towards, once children get into that second and third grade, in particular, third grade, in this year, there were some peer conflicts. It wasn't, it wasn't like bullying, but just peer conflict. And so, that might be something they would have to agree, would they agree to go to a peer mediation? And then, a peer mediator would be selected who would then work with the students. And, and again, it's not.
There's always mediating too, there's always two mediators, generally speaking.
Yeah.
There's always two mediators.
I just wonder like at the K and one, would they really understand what, what it is?
Yeah, I've had peer mediation programs in lots of other places I've been in.
At that age, too, when it worked out.
Because the little kindergartners, it's pretty easy to fix the problem. I mean, generally speaking.
I think it's great that we're having the upperclassmen be those role models that they should be for the, for the younger kids, because they really do look up to them.
They do.
And I, I love it because it's building asset number thirty-six, peaceful conflict resolution. Young person seeks to resolve conflict non-violently.
And what they stress though, the mediators aren't the one who tell you what to do.
They don't solve it, right.
They just mediate so that the two, the parties are deciding what to do.
And there are adults nearby in case the process goes off the track?
One of the coordinators would be available, right.
Yeah, it's like a therapist.
Right, right.
And where, physically is there a? Would this take place?
Well, that's what we'd have to decide.
We have to decide.
Sometimes they have it right on the playground.
Okay.
You mean, they can happen anywhere.
Call them in and say, yep.
Well, that's, that's a part of it, because obviously, if they're in fifth and sixth grade, we have to look at the time when, when that would happen.
Right, sometimes mediation gets scheduled, right?
Right.
So, is the model for the eighteen, I think it was eighteen, the eighteen peer mediators?
Yes.
Is the model, 'cause I would imagine as much as it's helping the offenders, for lack of a better word, figure out their issues, I would also imagine that it's, the peer mediator is getting a lot out of the experience as well. Is, you were saying, you know, we, we sent out a sense of who to nominate to be a peer mediator. Is it also collecting, is that, how do I, is it not just the model perfect students in that list? Or are there also some more challenging students?
Well, it's the criteria, and I apologize, I didn't bring the, the form that we gave to teachers. It, it is not about the, the one, the, it's not about the A student. It's not necessarily about the student who follows all the rules, holds the hands. It's about children who listen, who are able to maintain confidentiality at, even at that level. You know, child, even at that level, can't go home and talk about what they're, what they're doing. It has to be somebody who can agree that that will stay in, in school and, and be confidential. Somebody who is a problem solver. But really, it's being able to listen and, and not jump right in and solve the problem. So, some of the children are, their names that, yeah, they're, you don't really hear a lot about in, in any direction. Just, you know, they're kids that are very thoughtful, you know, have good peer relationships, but not always the extrovert, not the outgoing one. Kids that are able to, again, listen and, and help solve the problem and, and, you know, that's. So, we had more fifth graders nominated than, we had more fourth graders nominated than fifth graders. So, we will have to look at that and figure out, you know, what to do about that.
Did, could the kids volunteer?
We did not, we did not put it out for volunteer because, again,
For a specific personality traits, yeah.
Exactly, we might, we might look, and then, over the summer, Ms. Carroll and I, 'cause we'll both be there the summer, we might reach out to parents and, and ask certain students. But it really, it's not really a self-nominating process.
'Cause kids love to feel useful and love to have.
Cause kids love to feel useful and love to have a role where they feel they can help, but.
But it's hard, they, and again.
You know, you might have the ones that really didn't have the skills that you're looking for, but who volunteered, I mean, just, just an idea.
Well, but we also, I think have.
You train them, but you don't necessarily have to use them.
Um, well, we could, I mean, we could.
Or, or you know, you just wait, wait until they, you think they've developed the appropriate level of, a skill level. Uh, it's just an idea.
Yeah. I think that what's interesting about it is that these might be children who are not even aware of the skills they have.
Yep.
That teachers saw in them.
Yep.
That are the reasons why they are nominated.
Right.
So the next step of that will be then to reach out to the parent to make sure that the parent agrees to it.
Right.
Because it will require coming in, as I had mentioned, four mornings early, coming in on those PD days, so there is a commitment. And, um, not everyone may be able to do that, so. And then just finally, community service is the next step and that will be across the board. Um, chances for everyone, but all grade six students will, um, participate in some sort of community service. Hopefully weekly, but if not weekly, twice a month.
So are you putting in a requirement? Required amount, like the high school?
Would it be in the school or would that be?
Well, we have, um, next year, because we are down to four classes, it did free up some time. So I use, I split up some of that time to content area, but it also carved out another period of time and for lack of a better word, I'm calling it the SEL time. And so that will be when the new curriculum is taught, it will be when community service happens, it will be when, and also teachers will teach some study skills and that sort of thing. That might also be when the peer mediation happens, so there is a specific amount of time for that to happen.
I was really impressed, um, eight, like a lot of sixth grade students are giving time to helping others in, in the attitude of behavior, I mean.
Kind of data, yeah.
Right.
Eighty-six percent.
Um, we have a very active student council, any, anybody can join the council, they have to write a letter, letting us know why they would be good and then once they do, but they would read to younger grades, they'd go and help, they would help in the art room, they would do all kinds of things.
That is so awesome, that builds so many great character strengths and self-esteem and empowerment.
But that's why I want everyone to do it.
Yeah, yeah, well, you're. We're closed.
Get them out of their comfort zone.
Right, exactly. Yep.
The earlier the better.
Right.
Right, and then when they go to high school, middle high school, it'll be just a, a natural part of their life.
Natural part of their life, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Margaret.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, uh, some changes in, um, some prices that are being, uh.
Are we just, before we, are, are we approving the second step?
Yeah, you should, you should approve that.
Which I feel like we might have lost a page in our yellow notes.
I don't think you do.
It just, it, it ends.
Might have.
Maybe. They end abruptly, there's no motion listed, that's why I.
There's no, what listed?
There's no motion listed under the.
Oh, it's, I have it the next page, motion.
I don't.
You don't?
Yeah. It's missing a page.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it is on the very next line, I'm sorry.
Okay. Um, I make a motion to approve the purchase of a second step program for the Penbrook School as presented by, um, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Colin McDonald.
So moved.
Uh, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, good night.
Have a good summer, if I, I still have another meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, you too. Okay, so we have some, uh, proposed changes with the, uh, school lunch as well as the extended day, uh, preschool extended day in enrichment that we wanted to talk about. So Budget and Finance met with, uh, both of you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Michael and I, so we talked about this for quite a while.
And Sean.
And Sean.
And Sean, right. Um, so it seems to be, uh, something that we think needs to happen.
Can I ask what the, um, have you checked around the other districts and what, so obviously you have, you've researched it, so what is the average?
We're a little below, many, we're right, they were in the ballpark, really, there's only two or three that we saw that were higher.
Yeah.
So we're right, we feel like we're right in the middle.
Okay.
Right. But we haven't raised the lunch prices in, what did we say, five years or four or five years?
I thought we thought four or five years.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
And really, I think at this point, there really isn't a choice. You know, given the tracking that we're doing, we, we realize that we have increased participation, but food costs have gone up, they've gone up everywhere. Um, what were some of the, uh, just the overall cost of the staffing, right, the labor cost.
Right.
Cause that's going up. So, yeah.
Food costs, for the delivery.
I mean, we are offering more healthy options, which is great, but all of that does, fresh options do cost a little bit more money.
Yeah, no, I was just curious to know where we fell.
We talked a lot about the paninis.
We still won't be high.
We won't be high.
We'll be right around whatever.
Kids love the paninis. Kids love the paninis, but we talked at length about the paninis are probably our most expensive offering. So we're trying to make sure that we don't lose money on every panini, right? So this, this increase of twenty-five cents, you know, will allow us to more break even. Right, we just said that's what we can.
Get closer, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we might offer some specialty sandwiches for a little bit of a higher price, like as a special.
Yeah.
Right, he was talking about.
And advertise that.
He was talking about those pop-up, like in the, in the, um, in the, uh, caf, uh, the coffee shop. He was talking about offering some pop-up restaurant kind of things, like maybe wings or sushi or something like that. That would cost a little bit more money though, because it will obviously cost a little bit more to offer. But, um.
He also said there was a, a strong penchant for bacon at the high school, which was, which hurt the budget.
Yeah, bacon, yes. The bacon sandwiches hurt the budget.
Ended up being a little bit expensive.
Can I get a turkey sandwich with eight slices of bacon?
I bet you that, you know, kids, some kids would definitely pay for it.
Oh, I think so.
I think they would, if it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you think about going to McDonald's and getting a meal deal, right, aren't those right around eight dollars or something, so.
I've seen that much now, I don't know, McDonald's used to be cheap, but it's not anymore.
Yeah, it's not anymore, no.
I've gone to McDonald's in a long time.
Isn't that true? I think that the meal deals are like eight dollars, right, so we, we're not even close to that, we're talking about three twenty-five. You know?
Would those pop-ups be reimbursable?
I think they're à la carte.
Yeah, I think it's.
If he can make it reimbursable, he will, but I might guess it's à la carte.
It depends on somebody serving.
Right, okay.
I mean, we debated a lot of conversation, we had conversations, Sean, Suzanne and I about, you know, do we go up to three fifty? You know, or do we do a differentiated prices where, you know, like sort of the hot lunch is three twenty-five, but the paninis are three seventy-five? You know, because we did see that in Hayrow when we did it there, and, and Masco too, there was a differentiation, um.
Like a super lunch.
Like a super, right, yes, some kind of specialty lunch or something like that.
It's more food.
Sean felt that at least at this point, you know, to go up the quarter, he felt, you know, he'd be able to make the program work. Um, obviously, you know, in the future, we could go in that direction if we feel that's necessary, but I think at this point, that's his recommendation based on, you know, now he's been here a year, kinda knows what the staffing needs to be. Um, we, we do know what the cost is of staffing because we have the contract, you know, in advance and so it's really, you know, he knows what the kids like, you know, what the menu items cost, right? So he, he's got a better handle on that, he feels that at least, you know, we may have to look at it the following year, you know, I don't know, but at this point, you know, three twenty-five for high school and three dollars for Penbrook. Is the recommendation.
Okay. Um, I'll make a motion to increase the lunch price to three dollars at Penbrook and three twenty-five at the middle high school beginning in the fall of twenty eighteen.
So.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna talk about the increase, uh, for the, um, preschool. So that's something also that we have looked at quite a bit and I think the five percent increase definitely was better than going, yeah, and we, we could've, we'd need more, but ten percent just, just seemed like too much of a increase.
I mean, we've been talking about the preschool revolving account now for a while, so we have reduced to teacher, we have reduced to paraprofessional, and we have taken half of the nurses, cause we rearranged the nurses, taken, or only charging half of the nurse to that account. Um, given the actual re- registrants, I guess you'd call them, that we have right now, knowing exactly who wants two days, three days, five days, we basically, uh, have a five thousand dollar, uh, to the positive at the end, even taking all those things out.
And that's with a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Of those things.
And we still only have a positive of five thousand.
Because we lost students.
We're down to eighty-four students, not a hundred and twenty-eight.
We lost over forty students.
So that.
From this year to next year.
Not sure.
We're not really sure.
Kindergarten.
The kindergarten class is really big, I, I hear.
Kindergarten, yeah, the kindergarten class is twenty, average twenty-two, I think at this point. So we're in the process of figuring out exactly why, but the reality is there's eighty-four registered, you know, maybe there'll be a few more over the course of the summer, but certainly not enough to.
Do we advertise the out of district?
We'd like to see more, we'd like to see an advertised tab.
Yeah, we advertise, well, that's, well, we, we talked about that, you know, figuring out like how to get it on Facebook, you know? Um, putting things out there on a regular basis, using social media to kinda say it over and over and over that this is what we're using, cause that's, tends to be where people tend to go.
Sure.
Um, you know, they do put the sandwich board out, they do have it posted on the website, but it, I don't think it's an aggressive enough approach. And we all agree with that, so we do have to step up, you know, the, you know, the, the presence, you know, especially when we, and I think, you know, we've been talking about, you know, doing a little bit more, um, you know, maybe do, changing the style of kind of how we orient people and, you know, doing some, some other things that may be more user-friendly to people, but, you know, we, we are act, we have to deal with what we've got in front of us and, um, you know, this five percent, uh, increase will generate about twenty thousand dollars. You know, and then we have to also take a long-term approach about the, looking at the preschool revolving account in the sense that now that we have a teacher's contract, we know what the salary increases are going to be. And were they about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars was gonna be the increase sort of the year after. So we have to look at, you know, sort of what our balance is, you know, in case we need to ha- hire a paraprofessional or, we, you know, that would pretty much eat up that twenty-five thousand dollar balance pretty quickly. But the following year, we know that thirteen thousand dollars more will be added to the cost of staff. So it, you know, we have the short-term situation that we're talking about right now, which is the five percent increase, but we do have to look long-term at this and try to figure out, cause there's a tipping point, right? You can't, you don't want it to be too expensive, you know, and yet you wanna be able to deliver the quality product, so how, how do, you know, how does that?
And we do still believe that we are, uh, you know, competitive.
Competitive, yeah.
With the local.
We, we did find out that, that fee, fee-wise, fee-based, we were competitive with the half-days, but not with the full-days or vice versa. I think we were competitive with the full-days and we were a little under what local folks charge for half-day, for, or less than full-day programs, less than full-time programs.
And I'm just thinking, who's gonna be on the public relations committee going forward with me?
Suzanne, yeah.
So maybe that's something we could talk about, is promotion for the preschool.
Just to get this out.
Good ideas, we're happy about that.
Yep.
Well, I guess the other thing is, do we know how many students come to the preschool that do not live in Georgetown?
I'm sure we do know that.
We do have that number.
I don't know if that's a high, it's, in the past, we've been able to, you know, get that, um, number pretty easily. Uh, we'll ask Amanda about it, cause we, we do, I'm sure she knows that, you know, in terms of.
That's also a big word of mouth within the, you know, the, the families of the same age children.
Yes, right, yeah. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So yes, I think we still do take, um, folks from, from other towns, I do think that's true.
Is that Georgetown School, you know that school that's right on, um, one thirty-three in town, it's like a Georgetown, it didn't say preschool, it's some kind of other school. Early childhood school.
Early childhood school of Georgetown, yeah.
Oh, that, former Smith family?
That's preschool, that's Smith, Smith Family Treehouse.
Yeah, right, it's a big Smith family.
That's also preschool.
Preschool.
Okay. No, but it's primarily daycare.
Well, yes, I said, yeah, it's daycare plus a preschool program.
Yeah. But they have preschool classes and they run preschool programs in those classes, but you can start there as an infant.
So that does bring up another sort of interesting point is, um, so Amanda did do a survey of, uh, the families, but one of the, um, questions I asked her to ask, and she did, was, you know, is your attendance in the preschool program for next year contingent on before and after-school care? And it was, one sixty percent of the people said it was. So, you know, we, we probably do need, we do need to provide that because otherwise we can't afford to lose sixty percent of the people. So we're in the process of sort of figuring out how that, how it's gonna be structured and set up.
Which they do have before and after care.
We do, we do, but at one point we were like, well, with so few students, you know, there's a cost to running it, you know, how do we make sure that it can at least break even? So we're in the process of doing that, but I, I was a, I wasn't surpr- I wasn't shocked, but I was a little surprised that it was that high a number. But it's the sign of the times, right? I mean, you said that, Michael, like in, you know, it.
Oh, that was the, that was the, the first thing we looked at was the hours that it would cover, if it didn't cover what we needed, we didn't even.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Look any further.
So it's a factor. You know, I mean, I remember when preschools were, you know, four hours a day and, you know, two, yeah, two and a half and.
Two and a half.
That was it.
Two and a half.
More like two and a half, you're right, like nine to eleven or something like that.
Kindergarten was like that as well.
Yeah, yeah, indeed.
So times have changed.
Yep. So, yeah, so our recommendation is a five percent increase.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve an increase of five percent, um, across the board, um, over the FY eighteen preschool rates with regret. So moved.
Are we, does it include extended day?
Yes, that, that was gonna be my question.
An enrichment?
I included that for your numbers, so we did that when we, uh, when we raised them last year, we raised.
Yeah, I would say across the board, so.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sure that it wasn't just.
Yeah, I was gonna, thinking the same thing.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is with regret, but. And, um, that'll be posted, like, so.
We'll let Amanda know that.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow.
And these things you talked about in terms of the cost of lunch and all those things will be handbook changes. That's why we've been trying to get all this done, so they can get it in the handbooks.
Okay, we have a, um, this also is anonymous, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I, uh, have a few donations that we're gonna approve. We have one, um, a thirty-two dollar cash, uh, donation that will go towards the, uh, school lunch program, um, which again, that's, it's so generous of people to continue to keep, um, that account in mind. So I'll make a motion to approve, uh, to, make a motion to, uh, accept a very generous donation, the amount of thirty-two dollars, um, from a anonymous donor.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's appropriate to say that that's a donor that's been consistently donating, you know, and, and has donated hundreds of dollars.
Consistent, yes. Right. Right, up to this point.
Up to this point, yeah.
And they did as soon as they, as soon as we made it, uh, right, as soon as we made it public that we were having issues with that.
As soon as it was a problem, yeah.
Uh, so, uh, another generous donation from the PTA, as we were talking to Joe, they have, uh, generously donated a thousand dollars towards that Camp Kiev trip, which is great because that can tend to be expensive. Uh, you know, more expensive than like a day trip, which is very, uh, kind of the PTA to do that. So I'll make a motion to approve the generous donation from the Georgetown PTA in the amount of a thousand dollars to be used for the Camp Kiev trip in November. So moved. Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, and then we have another, uh, anonymous donation for the food service, uh, balance. Uh, this amount is five hundred dollars, very generous, um, for this individual to, uh, give that money. So again, we accept these donations, it seems like every meeting that we have, and it's nice to know that the community is, um, there for us. So I'll make a motion to approve the very generous donation in the amount of five hundred dollars by an anonymous donor that will go towards the balance of the preschool, I, I'm sorry, the, uh, food services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for that. Very nice. Okay, we do have to talk about a, uh, summer meeting date.
So usually it's toward the end of July, so everything is closed out, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be a, uh, Thursday night unless you wanna do it on a Thursday night.
What about the twenty-sixth, which is a Thursday night, but.
I don't care if it's a Thursday, I mean, if anybody else has any.
Yeah.
Does July twenty-sixth work? I have a medical appointment that day at three thirty, but back home, but you you don't really need. If you need me, then it'd have to be a different day, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
What about uh anything else that week seems to work?
What about the twenty-fifth?
Yep, that sounds perfect to me.
Sure.
Suzanne, what, girl?
Six thirty.
Does that work for you, Pam? Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, so July twenty-fifth at six thirty.
Um before we finish, I just wanted to let you do a brief update on some staffing things, just quickly. I don't know if you knew that Matt Laut, Math Lot, Matt Lot.
I just heard that.
It is um relocating with his family to Central Mass, so he has resigned. The last day of school, he gave us his resignation. Uh Lindsay Little, who teaches in the history department, she's wonderful. Um Lindsay's getting married this summer, and she's uh moving to Maine with her new husband.
Oh, I love her.
So she has accepted a position in Maine, teaching history, so.
Lucky, can't move here.
Lucky school. She was gonna, she she didn't get a job, she, but she's a star, she will get a job.
She's a star, yes.
Uh we did fill Nora Cannon's position.
Oh, great.
And today, uh we, I signed a contract with Tyler Polston's replacement, so we're hiring um gentleman today. Dan starts on Tuesday, so, and then he's gonna have his hands full, because he's got the seventy applications to go through for assistant principals. Why? Because, you know, that's gonna be the first decision he has to make, you know? So I've looked through it myself, just because I was curious about the pool, so.
And how does the pool look?
That pool looks strong. I I, I was impressed, you know, with what I saw, so. You know, but he will have to start moving on that, because people, you know, there's other places looking for assistant principals, so you don't want to lose good people to the, to the neighboring districts. But Georgetown has a great reputation, so like a lot of people want to come here, so that's a good thing. So I think we'll have, I think we'll have a good pool to select from.
And Mr. Lot also was the soccer coach at the time, right?
Yeah, so that'll be, yeah. He was so nice the last day, he said, thank you very much for the opportunity to work here. It's been my pleasure, you know, so I was, it was really nice, because a lot of times people don't take the time to do that. Yes, and then of course Heidi and Peter.
Yeah.
You know, significant losses, so.
It's gonna be a change.
It'll be a change, right. I just wanted to let you know those couple of things that you hadn't heard.
Yeah, thank you for letting us know about that. Uh, okay, I don't have anything else, does anyone else sign on?
These are good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-five. We have no need for an executive session this evening, so we are adjourning for the evening and going home.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, have a good night.
Have a wonderful summer, everyone.